All right. Good morning and welcome to the Rockland School Committee Meeting of Monday, June 22nd. Because of the election, the first order of business is reorganization of the committees. And the first order is nominating a chairperson. I nominate Jill Moroney as that chairperson. The second?
My second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Jill, it's all yours.
Thanks, Mr. Mills. We'll go into having our vice chair. I'm going to nominate Emily Davidson.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we'll go into secretary. I nominate Tom Mills. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Can you, can you just go a little slower? Sorry.
Sorry. Sorry, Donna.
It's early, Donna. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know. Let me know when you're caught up.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. And I have this all typed up, so I will send this to you, Donna, so you don't need to take this part if you don't want to. Um, we also go into the rest of the organizations of the committee. So we're gonna go into, I'll list them all. We have Mrs. Davidson and Mrs. Hennessy for a sick leave committee, Mrs. Davidson and Mrs. Hennessy for a wellness committee, Mr. Mills and member number five, alcohol and drug violations subcommittee, member number five, the athletic department liaison, myself on the fiscal policy committee, Mr. Mills and Mrs. Davidson on W R P S T V community broadcasting liaison, myself on early graduation, Mrs. Hennessy on cable advisory committee, myself on the budget subcommittee chairman, Mrs. Davidson and Mrs. Hennessy on energy subcommittee, myself and Mr. Mills on the teachers collective bargaining subcommittee, myself and Mrs. Davidson on the secretary's bargaining subcommittee, Mr. Mills and Mrs. Hennessy on the custodians collective bargaining subcommittee, Mrs. Davidson and member number five to be on the cafeteria personal collective bargaining subcommittee, Mr. Mills and Mrs. Hennessy on the paraprofessional collective bargaining subcommittee, myself and member number five on the daycare collective bargaining subcommittee, and we'll follow Robert's rules.
I have seventeen seconds.
All those in favor to accept? Aye. Aye, aye. Okay. Now we can move into the regular part of the meeting. We'll start with the, well, I first want to stop for a second and welcome Jamie Hennessy to our committee. She finally got to get elected on Saturday after much ado, two and a half months late, but here you are, so welcome. It's nice to have three ladies here with us today or for here on. And we'll go into the acceptance of the minutes, minutes of school committee meeting from June 8th.
Motion to accept.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The four of us. Nothing under audience, so we'll go to Dr. Kron for his superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good morning. I'd first also like to welcome Jamie Hennessy to the committee. It's very exciting. Very glad to have you. Second, just want to update everyone, we are expecting guidance from the Department of Education tomorrow on the reopening of schools in the fall, and we are expecting guidance in the areas of health and safety standards. Chris, can we mute?
Donna?
Come on, school.
Cleaning. Cleaning and sanitizing. We'll make our P P E decisions based on the guidance around cleaning and sanitizing. We're expecting guidance in the area of COVID case management and testing. So what do we do if a case is found in one of our buildings? We're expecting guidance on social distancing requirements. As you know, currently at six feet. We are expecting guidance in the area of transportation. So how many students they will allow on a bus or van? We are expecting guidance in class size, and we are expecting guidance in scheduling. We are also expecting some guidance in the areas of curriculum. I think there's going to be some remediation that's going indeed to take place due to the loss of learning in this past spring semester. I think that there may be some alterations to curriculum, so we're gonna be looking for that. And there will also be some guidance around food service. So that guidance is expected out today, and I'm looking forward to getting it and beginning the process of working through it. The plan as of now is that the senior leadership team is going to come together actually physically in meeting in the library to dissect and create the plan, create a draft of a plan. We'll do that on July 7th. That draft plan that's created by the senior leadership team will then be workshop with a large, large steering committee that includes people from town hall, that includes our health agent, Delshaun Flip, that includes people from police and fire, and that includes parents, that includes students, and includes teachers, so that everyone has a chance to weigh in on the plan before it is finalized. And of course, the school committee will be a part of that planning as well. And then the school committee will get a look at the final plan before it's implemented. So that is what I am thinking about right now, pretty much 24 hours a day, and I'm looking forward to that guidance so that we can begin planning, planning our reopening. And that's all I have for superintendent's report this morning.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Kron.
Question?
Question.
A quick question. Did they give you any guidance when we're gonna open our time? Probably, you have any idea?
They haven't given us any guidance. What they've implied, Tom, is they're implying that we may be bringing teachers back a few days early.
Okay.
Um, they're implying that they may mandate a short period of professional development before we bring back kids. Again, that's just me speculating based on things that have been said.
Yeah.
But I do not anticipate the calendar changing at this point. And, and I do know, well, I don't know, but I am assuming that the guidance is going to be mandatory in some areas and advisory in others. So this committee, this committee may have some decisions to make about schedule and, and starting up in the fall.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? No, they're nodding no to me. Okay, we'll move on to reports. We have financial reports for May. School department, high school student activities, middle school student activities, and the daycare.
Motion to accept.
They're both muted. I second, second Emily's second. Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's the four of us. Month of reports for June, we have computer technology for Mr. Wells, English nine through 12 with Ms. Cahill, family consumer science tech with Ms. Folsom, math five through eight with Mr. McDonald, physical education and health with Ms. Folsom, radio TV station with Mr. Cable Murphy, social studies with Mr. McAllister, and the middle school with Mrs. Shipper and Mr. Griffin.
Eight motions to accept.
Eight seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
I had a comment over here. Sorry, it's 9:00 AM on a Monday morning. Mr. McAllister, I just wanted to give kudos to him. He had the teachers write up teacher reflections. He is history, social science department, and they put in like what they expected and what they actually got. And I thought it was very interesting to read their takes and what they learned from teaching this year and how they would change it. I thought that was really cool for us to sort of hear their side of things, on their expectations and then what they got. So thank you to Mr. McAllister for that. It was cool to read. Newsletters for June, we have the Rogers Middle School newsletter. Ms. Bond, I think, had a great, she's on here with us, but she had a great start of that. It says, "Our school building has never defined our effort. Take a look at some of our remote learning work. Thanks to everyone for all your hard work. Over the past three months, it's more clear to me than ever before. Every day is a great day to be an RMS Bulldog." I thought that said a lot too, because obviously that's how we ended school. But I also felt the, still the love from the Bulldog world, and I thought that was a great beginning of that, Ms. Bond. On to old business, we have FY 20 and FY 21 budgets. So I'm going to you, Dr. Kron, with that.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I'm gonna turn it over to Jane Hacke. I was just gonna give a little bit of an overview.
Things are going very well, all things considered. We're, thanks to the work of Ira Kohler over the course of last week or so, we were able to have a very large warrant this week, which gives us a solid projection for year end. So right now, we are looking at a slight positive balance in FY 20, which helps us for FY 21, because the less we use our revolving accounts this year, the more we have available for next year. So it looks like we're gonna be able to conclude the remainder of the fiscal year without dipping any further into our revolving balances, which is very good news, and have some grant money to be able to roll over. And then for FY 21, again, all things staying equal, a picture in this point of time, assuming that we are going back in financially supporting our March 13th model, based on a 10% reduction in state aid from the governor's budget in January. We have exceptionally close to balancing the budget, to the point of, to the point of having just about breaking even. We've just about reached the number. If we're not a little bit to the good, yet we still need to be conservative until we actually get this guidance tomorrow, because we're gonna be back to the, we're gonna be back to the, back to the beginning once we get the guidance, because it's gonna tell us, once the working group concludes, we'll have what our actual product is that we're gonna be financially supporting, and we'll have to put new numbers to that. And then, of course, we'll actually get a number from the Commonwealth, and then we'll have to adjust to that. So at this picture in time, this point in time, with this picture, things have not gotten any worse. If anything, they're ticking to the positive.
Great. Great news. Thank you, Jane. Thank you for all you do and your team does. I know this is an everyday thing on your mind, so we appreciate that.
Yeah, just like, I, I would like to really just thank the financial team. You know, not just in our office, Ira and Joan and Donna, but also thank town hall. The level to which Biz and I are working together, I think, is pretty unprecedented, and her staff working with our staff. It's, it's just a very good, what's in the best interest of Rockland kiddos perspective, and is really clear support for education coming from the town accountant's office. So very, very grateful for that.
I agree with that. It is refreshing. You feel like you can trust everyone that's involved, that it is about the kiddos, and that is, it's new for this town, and it's impressive that that's how it's being handled. So we appreciate all of you all. Moving on to the town meeting articles. Is that you, Jane, or is it Dr. Kron?
Jane, okay.
Yes. Yeah, town, town meeting articles, we made a few adjustments to the articles that were previously approved. There's no action required by the school committee, but we wanted to make sure you were aware. Just, I wanted to make sure that the warrant language allowed us the flexibility in to maximize state, federal, county grants, et cetera, and be able to match leverage, et cetera. So Jill, Madam Chair, I think we've given you the language. One of our revisions was not implemented, so we're gonna need to make that motion on the floor to eliminate the leasing of Chromebooks, because we're not, when the lease, we're gonna purchase, because you cannot be reimbursed under any of the relief programs for leasing. It has to be an outright purchase.
Okay, I have that, and I printed it out, so I am ready to go. To be brave, to speak.
If I could just, if I could just throw out there, I think it's very important that the public understand what we are doing. We are purchasing Chromebooks, and we will be one-to-one pre-K to 12, starting next year. And people may say, "How are you affording to do that, given the economic crisis that we are in?" And it's important for people to understand that we are paying for that with CARES Act money, that that is coming through as part of the CARES Act. And we're very, very fortunate that Jane has found us this avenue. But I do want the taxpayers to understand that we are not paying for this out of general fund money. We are paying, well, we are, but we're being reimbursed via the CARES Act, and I think that's important for the public to know.
And that none of the money that is being utilized for Chromebooks is available for salaries.
Correct. That's two separate places. And it's $400,000 that Jane found through the CARES Act, so I think that's kudos to her, too. That's huge for this district, especially what we just went through with being remote. To be able to have everyone have their Chromebook, I think, is just outstanding. So, thank you.
That, that should be explained at town meeting tonight, just that, that way.
Thank you, Tom. Yeah.
Yeah, one of us has to do that.
Okay.
One of the, one of the members of the town.
On bottom, we'll want to say very specifically, we want to be careful and use the portion of the CARES Act that's being administered by Plymouth County. Okay? Because the CARES Act that is coming through the grant formula, salaries are allowable. Only the portion that's being administered by the county is ineligible for salaries.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Okay.
Okay.
We don't have to vote on that, do we?
No, you do not.
No.
Okay, so then we're on to new business. I'm gonna flip-flop us so that Nancy can go ahead of Ms. Bond. So we're gonna go to Rogers Middle School PAC report, so Nancy doesn't need to spend her morning with us if she chooses not to. If she has other things to do, like her children.
Thank you. Well, as you all are aware, this year was very different, but we did have some fundraisers in the first half of the year. We switched to a question we posed to the parents about donations or fundraisers, and they loved the idea of donations, so we raised $5,325. We had the concert that was outdoors at the middle school back in August. We sold some sacks. Thank you, Jill. You still have some of those around for $45. We did Chipotle dining for a cause for $266.23. And at the November parent conference, we did basket raffle, RMS apparel, and bulldog sacks, and we raised $1,115. And then we had a great go at the book fair. We raised $1,849.67 for the teachers and the library. And then we did another $184 in rewards that they were able to use. They spent all of it and bought books and things for the school for this year. So that was great. And we had the holiday stroll. We did, sold apparel and candy, and we raised $435. And then we also sold to the fourth grade at Jefferson. They bought sacks, the bulldog sacks for the whole grade, for $900. And then we were able to support the school agendas. We paid, half of them was $1,963. And then with no end of the year, we were able to change things up a little, and we bought the eighth grade year books for $2,680. We donated to the senior swag bags, the $125 that usually goes to the golf tournament that they didn't have the share. We were able to give $450 to the remote learning for prizes to the middle school, which all the children, including mine, appreciated. We gave the middle school t-shirts, four to each of the elementary schools for fourth grade prizes. We did buy the shirts for the Shamrock Classic, which hopefully we can use next year, for $142.80. And unfortunately, that's about it. We don't have the Shamrock Classic and all the fun of the year things, but it was great to be able to help all of the things we did. And again, I'd like to thank Ms. Bond, Mrs. Shipper, and Mr. Griffin. You guys were great to work with for the year, and hopefully we have another great year next year.
Okay.
Thank you, Nancy. I'm excited how much you gave back to all the other schools too, and, you know, kept this as a town. Part of when I was on the PAC at M P is I like to sort of keep, yes, we were an elementary school, but we were Rockland pride, and I think that's what you're reflecting. I think that's huge, and I appreciate all the time and effort it takes to be a PAC mom.
It's fun. It's good.
It's fun, but it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work. So we appreciate that.
It is, but it is fun. Thank you. We appreciate all you all do, too.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Good job. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Nancy. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. We have other things, but they were put on the back burner because of the end of school, so we'll save those for the fall.
Glad to that.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. PAC fundraising is so different in the middle school. The parents are sort of a bit step back, so I think you sort of have to, you know, reach and grab for everything you can get up in the middle school. And so, you know, it's different. So you are working a bit harder, so we appreciate that.
No, definitely.
Two middle schoolers that appreciated. Kevin brought us your book. He's very excited.
Oh, I'm glad we could do it. That was great, because you feel bad they missed so long a while.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
You're welcome. We'll move on to Ms. Bond with the Rogers Middle School Improvement.
Morning, everybody. Again, thank you to, thank you to Nancy Anderson. We did some stuff for the kids at the end of the year that was obviously different, but I think also made a difference, which was great. The gift cards were a big hit that we were able to mail out to our student, the weak kids, and I think the yearbook made a big difference to the kid. We saw a little positivity there as the kids were grabbing their stuff and leaving at the end of the year. So I appreciate your efforts, Nancy, and your willingness to do different stuff, and you're always available and, and willing to help. And all those other PAC parents were, were great, too. So yeah, hopefully next year, we'll get right back at it and have some fun activities for the kids. As far as our school improvement plan, I feel like we were, as people have said, stuck in a moment of time, is of March 13th, because so much of our stuff, as we wrap up, happens after that. So some of our, our school improvement plan is the same, but then some is pretty significantly different. And in a couple spots, I'll just start with student learning. We've added to define our remote learning expectations, specific to work for teachers, work for kids, how to help families, all that other stuff, to continue to define our remote learning website that Mr. Griffin set up. So if we have to go out, we're ready. The kids are ready, and we're ready. Our budget is reflecting that, and Colleen and Jane have really helped us with that. So that will be part of that. After the discussion with Dr. Kron and the senior leadership team, I think we'll start to move forward in a direction as far as if we have to go out for an extended or shortened period of time, how are we gonna make that happen? And I want to just say that I thought that the middle school teachers and kids and parents were great. They really did some good, good work. I saw some of the work. I shared with you just a couple of samples, and I appreciate that support from the families, but we're gonna get even better at that. We didn't really have a full year to put iReady into effect, so we'll spend some time next year figuring out how that worked and moving forward with iReady as our primary assessment, and also looking at our assessment schedules and our common assessments and all that, just to make sure we're all aligned at all grade levels with all families. Continuing to look at our guidance curriculum and what they're doing with kids inside the classroom, because they're such a part to what happens with our kids. We had, I think, all of our teachers were on Google Classroom by the time we got up to remote learning. So continuing to train the staff in Google Classroom and other remote learning programs, that's gonna be important. And making sure that we're aware of and using all the online curriculum resources that we have. So for example, in our ELI department, make sure we're using the online literature component. Mr. McDonald and Mr. Griffin have done a great job with the online component for Big Ideas, which we implemented, grade six to eight. So making sure, sure that we're using those resources. As far as instructional practices, continuing to train the teachers in Google Classroom and remote learning. And then I also added, I have to find it, but making sure that their parents feel supported as far as what Google Classroom is and what our remote learning website is, and getting online with parents or forming small groups or whatever the parents need, or X2, look at grades, whatever the parents need to make sure that they're feeling supported to help the kids at home and understand what our expectations is, are. That's gonna be a big focus for us. Making sure that we're meeting the needs of our struggling learners, and again, circling right back to our accelerated learners to make sure that the kids who need more from us academically are getting that. That's been a big focus that we started talking about this year. As far as communication relationships, that's where I talked a little bit about supporting parents. We also started training our kids on what X2 means as far as them looking at their grades to understand that. Mr. Griffin did a little work up with Mrs. Collins, who's one of our guidance counselors for all the kids, to make sure that, for now, grades seven and eight can look in their grades and understand what that means, what those grades mean, how to make it better, give them a little ownership. So we'll continue with that. And then at the end, I think, continuing to make sure, this is for Lizzie, and with our staff there, we're giving the staff the PD that they need. That's meaningful and important and good for kids and good for family. So that's, um, just a very basic overview. Like I said, some of it has changed, and some of it is staying the same as we finish stuff up.
Uh, we have the table that, don't we?
Yeah, first reading.
Yeah, the first reading. Motion to table.
Second.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Bond, I just want to say that having two middle schoolers this year, I think, the Google Classroom was the scariest part of being a parent and trying to maneuver my way. I talked to you this one day when we were giving out lunches. I feel like, once I sort of figured out Google Classroom, it was less scary. I was able to see what the kids were either missing or we didn't do well with, and I, you knew that, and you worked on it. Mr. Griffin worked on it, so I appreciate as a parent that you were listening and, you know, knew that that's where the parents were coming from. I do believe that the teachers were there. I had a, or had a sixth and eighth grader, and I feel like the teachers were all in the game. Anytime we messaged any one of them, they had, got right back to us. So I think for sort of getting thrown into this, the middle school really stepped up, at least for me as a parent. That's how I felt. Jamie, you have middle schoolers as well. Did you have anything to add?
I think I second everything that you've sort of mentioned, Jill, and Ms. Bond. I agree the staff is really responsive, whether it was private comment on Google assignments. Very encouraging to my, to SL, and any questions I had, maybe were answered pretty quickly.
Well, I do think, Jill, the, really, the families and the parents and the kids and the staff, I think everybody stepped up, but we know that if we do go out again, there's work to be done. You know, we're very aware of that. And I think giving parents access to the grade book with remote learning opportunities to look at stuff, you know, that's something we have to get better at, too. So I appreciate your kind words, and I think if parents would just continue to give us their opinions and suggestions, that makes a big difference for us. So any emails or phone calls about that would be great.
Okay, thank you. And I appreciate that that's how you are, right, that you are willing to sort of adapt. We're all adapting to this crazy world, but you're willing to sort of listen to us, so that goes a long way, too. So thank you and your team for all you're doing, because I believe that it's showing. So thank you for that. Move on to the resolutions in support of education funding in the COVID-19 era. Is that you, Dr. Kron?
Yeah, this is something that was brought to me by the Rockland Teachers Association. I wholeheartedly support it. It is essentially asking our legislators to fully fund the Student Opportunity Act, and of course, understanding that we're in a financial crisis, but this, this is a, a resolution that would be supported by the school committee and by the teachers association, and we would be throwing our support on a state level behind this resolution, and I wholeheartedly recommend to the committee that they adopt this.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's Okay, that's the four of us.
So, do you, do you submit this to the state? Is that?
Yeah, this, yeah, we're, I, I don't know if our name, Emily, if I don't know if our name is put on a list or if we actually send in a copy, but I have a resolution here that's actually, will, will be signed by me and signed by Jill. And then I think the union sends it in, I believe the union sends it in, but one, one way or the other, it will get to the state level.
Okay.
I think it's a great thing, Dr. Cron. I wholeheartedly agree with you. Okay, on to the school committee summer meeting schedule.
Today, thank you very much. Goodbye.
We have, well, everyone goes quiet. We have one scheduled for Tuesday, July 14th at 9:00 a.m. Will be our next meeting after this. We will.
What time? 9:00 a.m.?
9:00 a.m. again, if that's okay.
Yeah. Sure.
And then, Dr. Cron, do you want us to have more in the summer or we want to ride it until August 24th?
Yeah, I think that's fine for now that we scheduled that meeting on the 14th. We may need more meetings. We could get together and, and post and call another meeting if necessary. But I think if we meet on the 14th, there'll be some important things to decide and discuss then. Quite honestly, if we need to have the meeting sooner than that, then I will ask you all, you know, for your availability sooner than that and we'll post it sooner. There's, there's going to be a lot of things changing between now and, and then. So, there'll be a lot to discuss. But then I think the next meeting, Donna Lamb, you're on here, is August, set for August?
24th.
24th.
That sound right.
Is that right, Donna?
They can pick which state they want to meet in August.
Okay. Okay, so do you want to do the 24th or do you want to do the 17th? How do you want to do that?
We usually do the second, the second and the fourth, right? So, I was thinking it would naturally end up on the 24th.
Yeah, I think it's like, yeah. If we have to get together before that, we'll get together.
Right. Does that work for everyone? I don't know Emily and Jamie's summer schedules.
Yeah, that's fine with me. I think we're probably going to have to meet another time, I would assume, just to go over all the regulations and protocols before opening.
Yeah.
Right.
That's, that's before opening, isn't it?
Yeah.
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 Yes.
And what time would you meet?
9:00 a.m.
Sure.
Do we want 9:00 a.m.? Is that good for everyone else or do we want to do our regular?
Regular meeting at night?
The 6:30.
I just figured if it were earlier in the day, if you had plans with your family or something like that, it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't take up your whole day. That's all.
Okay.
Yeah, 9:00 is good.
If we have, if we have to change it, we change it.
Right. I know that they're working. I'm sort of just working a little bit from home, but Jamie and Emily actually work. I wasn't sure of their schedules.
Oh, okay.
My job flexes around school committee. Their jobs might not.
The work clock path is right next to me on the counter here.
That's what I thought. So, we'll go with 9:00 a.m. on the 24th and if it doesn't work, we'll move it. Okay?
I'll be retired by that time, so I won't have a schedule.
Oh, I thought as of September 1st, Mr. Mills.
That's right. Yes.
You'll have to go around your golf schedule.
That, that's it.
Is that official, Tom? Tom, is that official?
It will be Wednesday when I get down and turn on my paperwork.
Oh, that's a big deal.
Very big deal. How many years, Tom?
Big deal.
13 in Boston Public Schools. And I just, I, I spent a couple moments at the height, at Rockland Public Schools teaching.
That's what I thought. Very good.
As a sub. But then they threw me out when I, then somebody said, suggested I become a member of the school committee. And I did that and they said, "No, you can't teach here." That's what, that was the alter, you know.
Well, we got the win in that.
That's right.
Yeah, for a while. Yeah, it's been fun. Boston's been fun.
I'm sure you'll have to adjust to the new schedule of not having, I know you like going in, seeing your kids.
We, well, sorry that, but you know, like my wife, my wife still teaches. She's teaching in brain trade. So, we were getting up at 4:30 together every morning and, yeah, doing everything and the dog was there and, you know, now, I don't know. She'll have to sleep in another room.
Unless she expects coffee and breakfast made and then she'll go off.
That's usually what hap, usually what happened is I make, we got up and made coffee and brought that up. But, well, I'm sure we can work that out. Maybe, maybe I get her to retire, Joe.
Oh.
We're working on that. No, that's all.
I sense that there's a plan at work.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Well, well, yeah.
I'm jealous. We have so many more years to go.
It's early yet. It's early yet. But it, I, I don't know what I'm going to do with myself, though. That's, that's, I got to do something. I'll find something.
I'm sure she has a honey-do list for you. That's what wives do.
We have that all day long. I have one going right now. Yeah.
So, we'll have, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Tuesday, July 14th at 9:00 a.m. and August 24th at 9:00 a.m. for our meeting.
Motion.
You have a second? Emily said second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, thank you.
You got surplus?
We have surplus.
Few surplus items.
Not much, not much.
Okay.
There.
Do I read down?
I don't, I don't think you need to read the list, but if, if, if it's on this list from, from Tim Wells, then I'm sure it's something that the district can no longer use.
Glad to that. Motion.
Second, great. It's pretty well dead. I had asked him that about that stuff last year and he said if it was on here, it was pretty well done. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Moving right along. And that's it. We're on to personal information for May and June. Dr. Cron, do you have anything to add?
I have nothing to add.
Okay. Now, we'll go to public service announcements. We'll start with, we'll start with Ms. Hennessy. We'll let her talk first today.
I did write notes. I don't even know where they went. So, give me one second. First of all, I'm going to say I'm very excited and happy that the election happened on Saturday. I wanted to thank the town of Rockland and everyone who went out to vote and I'm grateful for their support. And excited to see where these three years go. I do want to thank Mike Garofalo for his work, your work if you're listening, on the school committee last term. And Dick Phelps, if you're listening, for your past commitment, I'm sad that I'm not going to be able to work with you on this committee. And I thank you for your kind words leading up to everything. And then I wanted to say to Dr. Cron and Emily and Jill and Tom and Donna and Jane and everybody who's on the line, thank you for welcoming me and I'm excited to support the children and the schools and get to work, I guess. And excited that the first meeting's under my belt.
Well, thank you. We're happy to have you. We're excited to have you on with us, too. So, thank you for jumping in and having to wait two and a half months to get here. Nothing like anticipating your first meeting for two and a half months. Emily, Ms. Davidson?
Okay, welcome, Jamie. I'm so happy to be working with you and looking forward to the next term with you. Also, I want to say thank you to everyone that's worked behind the scenes at the school. I know we haven't been there physically, but I know a lot of hard work and time has gone in behind the scenes and it's much appreciated. And I hope you all get a break soon from it. It's well-deserved. And that's all.
Thank you. I agree. Mr. Mills?
Yes, again, one is I want to thank, you know, Mr. Garofalo and Mr. Phelps. I haven't talked to Mr. Garofalo, but I, I still plan to do that. I did talk to Dick. He's off in some vacation spot, you know, it's funny him, you know, doing that stuff already. Alright, Dick, I'll, I'll be down there. I'll, I'll buy you a drink. But, but really, particularly for Dick, I mean, Dick's been, he's been part of this, all this community for such a long time. It's kind of, it seems, it seems strange already that he's not still not part of it. But he, he's part of the community, but not part of the, the school committee. So, I appreciate all that. I appreciate and welcome to our new members and thank you for having a, a, a good year. And, and I hope that everybody has a safe and enjoyable summer. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to start with thanking Donna Lamb, who's on here with us, who was on here with us. She's on everywhere we go. And she answers all my questions anytime, even if it's on the weekend, if I think of something. So, I want to thank her for all that she does. She's like my right-hand lady. And I'm sure someday she wants to curse me or curse at me. And I just want to thank her. I don't think enough kudos gets to go to her. So, today I wanted to make sure I recognized her and said thank you for all you do, Donna.
Thank you, Donna.
I also wanted to say just that I enjoy volunteering for this town, students and the faculty of RPS. Five years on the MP PAC and now entering my third year on the school committee. I'm blessed to have the support of these committee members to believe in me to be the chairman. This is not always a fun ride, but it's a ride I'm lucky to be on. And I wanted to thank Craig, Kevin and Erin and the rest of my family and friends, along with this town, for believing in me and that we will get through whatever comes in front of us this year together. I do feel like we have solid ground with this committee and with the town. And we are blessed to have the faculty that we have. So, I just wanted to say thank you for that. That's all I have. Enjoy your summer. We will. Go ahead.
Motion to go into executive session?
Emily's seconding. All those in favor?
You have to poll each one.
Oh, Mr. Mills?
What, yes?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hennessy?
Yes.
Okay. That's all of us. And I say yes as well. And we'll adjourn this meeting and then we'll go into executive session.